Stuff started, but you do not read any, we don't need Zoom script anymore because it's now on the agendas.
All right, I'd like to bring the Planning Commission meeting of May 23rd, 2023 to order and let's start with a roll call for attendance.
Thank you. Chair Fernandez.
Here.
And since you are remote, I will ask, are you attending as a member of the public or are you attending in accordance with AB 2449?
If I am able to attend as part of the Planning Commission, that was my intent.
Okay.
But if not.
You can do that. We do not have a quorum tonight, so you can still participate as a member of the public if you'd like. There aren't any decisions being made.
Right. Well, if I'm able to participate as a commissioner, then I can speak more than just the two minutes as public, right?
Okay, and so thank you. You will be attending and that, I believe there's two categories. One is the just cause, the other is the emergency medical care. Can you just tell us which one you're under?
Emergency medical care. I just got out of the hospital after two weeks, a day ago. I think that qualifies.
Yes, yeah, you don't, and you don't have to go that far. You can just tell me emergency medical.
Emergency medical.
I can't ask that stuff and be in line with what I'm supposed to be doing. So, okay, thank you. All right. Vice Chair Fritz?
Here.
Commissioner Ottinger, thank you. And I did get a note from Commissioner Burns that she is not able to attend tonight. And Commissioner Kelly may be able to attend, but she will be attending as a member of the public if she does. So with that, we still do have a quorum because we have three members. Thank you Everett. So we can proceed.
Thank you. So next we'll start with comments from members of the public for items not on tonight's agenda.
Okay, and so the way this works, I don't see many members of the public in the Zoom audience, but what we'll do is we'll take one member from the public in the room, and then if anyone does show up online, we'll do online. But if you, yes, please do go up to the podium and you do have three minutes. Our timer says two minutes, but if you could change that to three, that would be great. We allow three at Planning Commission. So if you can see the timer behind you, that'll be there, but just please go ahead and state your name and your business.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me? Okay, I'm Carol Capria and I'm here to talk about the project at 7631 Healdsburg Avenue. My husband attended the Design Review Board meeting today. Actually, he attended and spoke regarding this same topic. And I felt I wanted to come so that I could speak to the issue to the planning department. And I'm sorry, not everyone's here, but I'm thinking everyone gets the minutes or sees the video or however that works. The last meeting I was at, I believe was the last meeting that was had April 25th, and we talked about the lights on the building and the issue. And so let me back up to what my husband said today. He reported back to me. I do believe this issue is, will be resolved. It's in the process of being resolved. So I'm just here to add on a few things that he neglected to say. So the lights were off when we came, when they were requesting to go from commercial to residential. All the lights were off for a few days. By the end of the following week, they were all back on again, and they're not just in the front of the building. There's 14 or 15 or 16 lights on the one corner, and then on the single-family home, there's more lights. Let's see. I took photos of some lights around town, some businesses that are identical to those lights, although these lights have shields on them, which look pretty darn good, actually. So I have those photos if anyone needs to see them, but probably you guys already know about that. I don't want to have to be the monitor of this project. It's in my face, so I can't really not see what's going on over there. But I feel like this is just an example of what happened with the lighting. I wanted to give it some time to, you know, self-correct, but it didn't. And I was trying to get a hold of Carrie, but it was too much. That's the thing. It's a lot of work for me to email, call, come to the meetings. I will come to a meeting if I have to, but it's really, I'm wondering if who is going to be monitoring and who would have said the lights were back on again if it wasn't for Glenn and I, who are bringing it to the city's attention. So yeah, that's important for me. And the last thing is that I have, I only get emails from the city council alerting me to their meetings and getting their agendas. And since I was here last, I asked how to manage to get that for Planning and Design Review Board, and I haven't received anything to date with regards to any of that. So one second. Yay. Thank you very much. That was it.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you. No, so we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda, but I will let you know that I'm going to be contacting the architect and the owner about those lights. And I will say, I live in that part of town, but I'm usually in bed by the time it's dark. So I don't necessarily see it, but if I do see it at night, and I will make a point if I'm driving at night to go past that on my way home, since it's pretty close by. But definitely just, yeah, an email is a better way. Right now, I don't have a permanent planning technician. Although the good news part of my planning director report is we are hiring somebody, and my associate planner is on vacation right now. So I'm a little short-staffed. Department of one and a little bit of a consultant help. So I apologize for not being on that and getting back to you. But we will definitely get with the architect on that. Well, the, so the intent for that and the condition of approval from the Planning Commission's approval is that they actually have to submit as part of their moving forward with their residential uses. They have to submit a plan for how they're going to change those lights out and adjust them so that they do have those permanent shields on them so that they, it won't be an issue, or remove some of the upper ones, which it sounded like they were interested in doing, and then shield the lower ones as well. So that, but they should all be shielded from night dark sky compliance. Yeah, I will. Alright, thank you.
All right. Next, I'm a statement of conflicts of interest, but since we don't have any public hearings, I don't imagine there's too many conflicts of interest. So let's move on to approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes to approve. Let's start with May 10th, 2022. Does anyone have any corrections, modifications?
Okay, and I think this came back because there was a question of.
Yeah.
Yeah, the atomical unit or whatever. And just for the public record, I did respond, check with the consultant, and there is, that's how they just kind of normalize for not having repeated listings on multiple platforms. So, and they do, as he noted, they did the specific analysis, in-depth analysis for Sebastopol, and they also did, because they have a contract with Sonoma County for Sonoma County, but the other cities that they're not contracted for, they don't know whether or not they're duplicates or not. And so that's the, was the background on that.
Great, thank you. All right, seeing no comments, would anyone like to make a motion?
Yes, I'll move that we accept the minutes of May 10th, 2022.
I will second that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, and I'll do the roll of vote. Commissioner Ottinger?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
Thank you. We, motion passes 3-0.
All right. Next, we have the minutes from September 22nd, 2022. Are there any comments about these?
Okay, and I will, I did want to make one note on this. So thank you, Commissioner Ottinger, for putting together these notes and sending them to me. I did go through and add from my notes into that for the draft minutes. This was from our site visit at Libby Park. And I'm just looking and seeing that there's, on page three, there are notes from some of the other parks. Those were actually not meant to be part of the minutes.
Okay, as I asked about that.
Yeah, and I, you can see I didn't format them. I thought I had deleted them out of the document. I guess I hadn't. So apologize for that. I would request that we strike those. Those are kind of informational from the park subcommittee. So you can actually take those as that, but not part of the minutes.
Yeah, that was a question I was going to have because I don't remember going to these other places.
Kathy just went above and beyond. I like this. I'm going to do these too.
That's great. But yeah, I don't think they should be part of the minutes. So yeah, I suggest we strike those from the meeting minutes. And if there's nothing else, you need a motion?
Okay, then I move that we approve the minutes with aforementioned items struck from them.
Right.
I will second that.
Excellent.
Okay, Commissioner Ottinger?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fritz?
Aye.
And Chair Fernandez?
Aye.
The motion passes. Those minutes are adopted. I believe those are the last 2022 minutes.
Okay.
So thank you for your patience.
All right, then we have no public hearings tonight, and our first regular agenda item 7A is a discussion of the Planning Commission rules. Staff report, Carrie?
Sure, and I'll also defer to Chair Fernandez as well. So this item, the last time the Planning Commission resolution, and this is our regulating rules for the commission, was updated was in 2012, so it's about a decade old. The commission previously had a discussion on this item regarding some updates to address a number of issues. We did want to hold off until after we started these hybrid meetings to understand how that might reflect in this. And so Chair Fernandez and I continued in the markup, which is before you, to both incorporate the Planning Commission discussion and some of those items. And so this is the discussion item for this, for this agenda item is to discuss and try to flesh out any remaining revisions. And then I will be bringing this back as a resolution at a future meeting.
Okay, are there any questions of staff to start?
You want me to kind of speak since I kind of brought it up to the agenda, or do you want to wait for?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so just, you know, having been in the Planning Commission for a number of years, and especially when I first became chair several years ago, and it was just unusual for me to have everything being done by the planning director department at the time. And I just felt that it should incorporate some advice or consultation with the chair of Planning Commission just kind of seems, seems right. That's kind of similar what the council does with the city director. And so I thought, you know, it'd be good to do it. I can say I've been twice had the opportunity to work with Carrie, and it's worked really well. I don't know, from her side, you know, you can listen to what she has to say, but from my side, it seemed to work out really well. We've been able to kind of look at agenda items and kind of plan ahead, and if there's any gaps, maybe we talk about bringing somebody in for education, that kind of thing. And so, you know, I hate for this work ratio to get lost down the road, and I think that's what happens is, you know, things are great and 10 years from now, it might be back to the way it might have been. So I just felt it's important to add some of these items. You know, because up until not that long ago, basically, all of us, including the chair, would get noticed that, okay, we're having, we are having a meeting. Here's what the agenda is, or we're not having a meeting, it's being canceled, et cetera. So kind of came up with these and thought it'd be a good time to update it and try to, you know, preserve those, these things for the future.
Great, thank you.
And so the easiest may, maybe if I just share the document on the screen and we go through. And actually, I can probably share it in Word and we can do the changes real time. That'll take me just a second, but that's.
Sounds good.
And Chair Andre, I don't know if you wanted to start off with some of your, your overall general comment, which I'm not going to go through and edit in this document live, but I know you had some suggestions on that.
Yes, as I was reading, I noticed that we had references to his or her, him and he and she. And today I felt that we needed to add the presence of there for people who are not binary. And after talking to a number of people, they said that many, for instance, a friend who was in public health said, all of our public health documents don't say him or her. They just say they or there or them. So I was going to recommend that we strike all the him and hers, or his and hers to they, there or them, if that's okay with everyone else. Or is, Carrie, do you know if there's any other city documents that are being altered in this way?
I don't think there are, however, I don't think that should stop us from being forward-looking. My only preference would be it, yeah, not his, her, or they, just they, them.
Yeah, they, them or their, V-A-G-I-R. My other comment was that I remember back when we added the her or she to all the documents, and it seemed like such a pain because we all knew what it meant, but today it just seems so right to be inclusive and to just go there. I understand that people in the younger generation are already there and speak it. It's just a new way of speaking and thinking about pronouns. And I probably won't be able to do it in my lifetime fluently, but I think younger people are, so the sooner we start, the better, probably.
It's fine with me. I don't have a strong opinion about that. So yeah, I also don't know if I'll become fluent at my lifetime. Still find it very confusing to read documents like that, but yeah.
Well, and the, and the good news is, is that we don't actually have to read this aloud. It's just, it's just a reference document. And I am actually having problems getting to that document online right now, so I'm just going to pull up the PDF and we can just go through it section by section.
And the good news is, is that we don't actually.
Now I'm showing my.
It's just, it's just a reference document.
That was from the livestream. Everybody, sorry about that. I made sure that the sound worked for the video later tonight. That's what happens. Can't win. Okay, so do we, I don't, do you want to just go through section by section?
Yeah, I guess I'll just start with maybe the rule, you know, yeah, section one, rule one. Does anyone have any comments on that first?
Everett does. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Go ahead, Everett.
Yeah, so I was kind of thinking that item, that the first item and the, let's see, and 3A, it should kind of go together. In other words, if you're talking about the meeting time being revised, you know, if you need to cancel a meeting, cancellation, I think it should still fall under with the, you know, consultation with the chair regarding of those actions. So I wasn't sure exactly how to explain that, or maybe 3A should be part of that to say, you know, how the agendas and the order of business, but it's kind of just seems like one, once, one area says it could be canceled or changed, and then, but does anything about chair, and then the one on 3A doesn't include chair. So I think that's part of the same kind of rules that we're trying to get to. Does that make sense?
So Chair Fernandez, would it work to just take 3A out of item three, take off the A and put it under rule one?
Yeah, that seems to make sense. Yeah, because that way it's all kind of covers that part of it.
Because it's actually part of the legal requirements for 72 hours before meeting stuff anyways. It's not really about the order of your business. It's more about posting an agenda.
Yes.
It's fine with me.
So I have a comment about three, unless we're going to discuss that again later. The comma after the word meeting in the first line should be deleted.
Which?
So that was trying to be a propositional phrase. I'm going to get to grammar here because Paul's here in this small group. So the intent is, the planning director shall prepare an agenda for each meeting, comma, with advanced consultation with the chair regarding the scheduling of various items.
Okay, I see what your point is.
So, but it doesn't, I mean, it's.
It's kind of long, but it follows.
Probably run on. Yeah, we can delete the comma, both commas. If you delete one, you need to delete the other, but we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, I think so. We're going to move 3A up to rule one.
Right, and it should be incorporated, just to make, make clear that the, the meeting may be revised to accommodate necessary business, or but, or such, such meeting, regular meeting may be canceled. Want to make sure that that's as part of the consultation with chair. That that's included as part of that.
So are we, I guess I'm, so you're suggesting placing 3A after the first paragraph? Is that what you're saying?
Well, well, this, what I'm saying is that just like preparing the agenda is in consultation with the chair regarding those various items. I, what I'm trying to say is that the meeting being revised and a meeting being canceled should also be part of that in consultation with the chair.
So Everett, what I would recommend, I think, I think I hear what you're saying, would this work? So paragraph two, rule one, paragraph two, sentence three, regular meetings may be canceled upon the determination by the planning director in consultation with the chair when a quorum will not be present, or when, that is not actually looking right to me, but so basically saying in consultation with the chair. So like, the intent is that the chair, if the planning director is going to cancel the meeting, they're going to talk to the chair first.
Yeah, so what you could actually do is say something like, planning director should prepare an agenda for each meeting. Or I guess what I'm trying to say, or, or cancel it, or model, or maybe modify, and then with advanced consultation with the chair regarding, something like that that just includes it. I'm not exactly sure the wording on that, but just if you're getting what I'm kind of getting to trying to, you know.
I'm fine with that, and we don't actually need to wordsmith this right now. We just need.
I just want to make sure that you understood. Got it. Okay. Yeah, good. I had no.
Just like last Tuesday when I called you and I said, I have a family emergency, and you said, I'm in the hospital. I said, okay, then we're canceling the meeting.
That's it, right?
That was a consultation.
That was it. That's all it takes. Okay. And, okay, so that's item one. Let's see. Okay, I don't think I have anything there. Item, oh, I do have. So the council just went through the time when it's supposed to adjourn, and if something's not done by a certain time, I, I thought that was, is that similar for the commission? And makes it pass by majority vote, and then the, but no later than, and the council had, but no later than a certain time. I'm just wondering if, if it makes sense to match some of their language on their meeting with this, if you can enlighten us on that.
Yeah, and I don't, we won't go by their times because.
Right, right.
It's just like done by like two or something. I tried to manage agendas all differently for this group, knowing your volunteer status.
Yeah.
The, yeah, so the city council just went through, so what they require is to go past 10:30, and I don't know how they changed it, but to go past 10:30, they require a unanimous vote of all of the council members. And then what they were looking at was, I think they're, and may not extend past, like, it was like 2:00 AM or something. Yeah, do Everett, do you know how they changed that?
I thought it was, I thought they were looking at, I don't know how they finally changed it, but I think it was something like, if, if by 10:30, whatever, you either have to table it, you know, in other words, I think, I thought the proposal was that they couldn't go past like 11 o'clock meeting.
Yeah, I think it was like 11:30 or something like that.
Yeah.
It did have to do with the janitorial and the staff here who are holding this meeting for us as well.
Yeah, okay. And then I'm, I'm wondering if the 10:30 time that you have, was that in mind when we were starting at seven instead of six, or is that?
Yeah, so the, so the times of the meetings that were, like, in the blue line crossed out here, we used to start at seven, and then the 11:00 PM required the vote that, that shown here, you know, I think this is certainly something that the commission can discuss on what that time, what those times should be. So I think we were proposing 10:30. That is consistent with the city council. And obviously, on a regular basis, we're still not going to do that, but you may get a big project, like a, you know, housing element before you that is controversial. Ours was not so controversial, but I'm sure you all have projects that are controversial. The, and so the question is, like, that's a four and a half hour meeting, if you go past that, and then do you want to, do you want that to be a little bit earlier? It could certainly be 10. I wouldn't do 9:30 because there are plenty of times you go slightly past 9:30.
I'm okay with 10:30.
Yeah, I'm fine with 10:30 also. Just wanted to make sure.
I'm okay with a majority vote rather than a unanimous vote as well. My two cents.
Sounds good.
And then if you want to set a, and must adjourn by time. And of course, the chair can, and the commission can always decide to adjourn on their own.
Yeah, I would, I, I don't feel the need to put that in there. I mean, we can, when we vote for the 10:30, you know, at 10:30, we can always say, all right, we'll do this for another hour or whatever. You know, I think that's fine. I don't think we need to.
Okay.
I don't imagine staying here till 2:00 AM.
Okay, yeah. I mean, how about just put it on there, but may extend past that time by majority vote, and also include a stop time or an end time. It shows, it's in other words, you can vote to.
I, I would say, I don't, I mean, because it might be like, oh, we're almost wrapped up with this. We have like another 15 minutes. Let's just vote on this. I don't think we need to say we're going to give us another 15 minutes. I don't know. I mean, I think.
Right, and there might be something.
Survive on the fly.
Where you're trying to make some sort of state deadline, or, you know, the Housing Accountability Act has the five hearing requirement thing, and if you continue hearing, you lose that. And so you might be like, hey, we're just going to do it. So actually.
Allows that, yeah. So what I'm saying is, I'm not saying put down a, a stop time. I'm just saying, just like it says that it can extend by majority vote, it can extend by a majority vote, and it could also say the majority says, okay, this sounds good. Let's go 10:30, but, but we don't want to go past midnight or something like that. I guess that's also an option to say that as opposed to just the open-ended and say, yeah, we can just keep the meeting going for on and on. But maybe, maybe that doesn't need to be said.
I'm, I'm for leaving it as it is and not, not requiring us to establish an end time. I think we can just do that on a case-by-case basis. And I don't know that that needs to be documented in this, in these rules.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just more of a, that, that's possible. If someone wanted to suggest that, doesn't mean it's required, but that's fine. I think, I think we, you know, I'm just looking at the future. And I mean, if it's happened to us, we know that, right? We know, okay, we're, we're working on this, and it's 10:30. It might take another hour. Sure, let's, let's power through it, that kind of thing, so.
Kathy?
Yeah, I was just curious. I could see voting to extend the meeting to another time, and then feeling quite comfortable if I had no issues with what was happening, excusing myself and walking out. That would be okay, right? I mean, as long as they weren't eliminating the quorum.
Yeah, you generally would want to say why, you know, I need to leave now or whatever, not just going to randomly leave the meeting, but I don't think you would do that. But yeah, as long as there's still a quorum, that's, that is totally acceptable.
Yeah, otherwise, yeah, I'm fine with it. And and by the way, just, I guess we should have probably mentioned this in the beginning. I asked Vice Chair Fritz to run the meeting since I was going to be virtual and emergency. It just seemed a lot easier and smoother to do it that way. So thank you, Paul, for doing that.
Sure, no problem.
So that looks like that's it for ru- rule one.
Yeah, so rule two, actually, I had a question. So this kind of second half of this first sentence. I didn't quite understand what that means. The, but a smaller number may adjourn from time to time until a quorum is present and those present may obtain the attendance of the absentees. I have no idea what that means. And I could, I could tell this was in here before. You didn't just make this up. This not.
Right, this is not, definitely not. So this is the absence temporary or permanent? Is that where you're at?
So.
Oh, oh, it's the first part of the first sentence.
First sentence, the second half of the first sentence, but a smaller, you know, three members are a quorum, great. But a smaller number may adjourn.
Right, so may meet from time to time. So you can meet without a quorum. And so like if you had someone who was going to be late, you had a commissioner who, you started a meeting, you had a quorum, one of the commissioners needed to leave and one was coming late. It means you could adjourn from a time to a time until that other person arrives and your quorum is now present. I don't understand that. And those present may obtain the ab- attendance of the absentees. That makes no sense to me, and I don't even know what that means.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not. English, I don't know.
It's just a weird way of saying, how about we strike, we can wait till they come and we have them then obtained.
How how about we strike that and.
So does adjourn mean starting a meeting? Is that, it starts, and adjourn is starting and ending? I always thought an adjournment was like ending a meeting.
Convene, I think, is the word for like calling to order or convening.
So I think maybe that adjourn should be a smaller number may call to order from time to time until a quorum is present.
No, I I'm looking at is that you start with five, okay, two, three people leave. So then you adjourn the meeting. In other words, you you stop the meeting until someone returns and now we're back to being a quorum and then you call the meeting back to order. Is that what I'm?
Correct, that is, that is what that means. And it's, it's not something that happens very often, but it is possible. I mean, you know, Commissioner Douche would get called out on an emergency because of his Red Cross stuff and then you know, that, so that, like, if he can't, if you just needed to wait for him to come back, like, you could do that.
Okay. Well.
We don't, we don't generally run our business that way, but you, this allows for that in some circumstance like that.
As long as someone understands what that means, I guess it's fine.
Yeah, but definitely attendance of the absentee, like, no idea what that means. That could be struck as far as I'm concerned, unless somebody can explain that. And and then just. Yeah, and just to be clear, so you can start a meeting with a quorum. And then if one, let's say, let's say like type, we have three people, one person has to leave. That quorum is no longer in force, right? It doesn't go back to that there was a quorum when it started. It's it's that it, there's a quorum and it continues to be a quorum. Is that correct? I understand.
Yeah, so you only have a quorum if there are three members present. So like tonight, if someone got called and really needed to take a call at the, from a family member because it's an emergency, this is actually probably more likely to happen, right? You can just adjourn the meeting for ten minutes or as such time as Commissioner Blank comes back. Allow that person time to deal with the, whatever they need to deal with and then, and just kind of hang out or whatever. Until there's a quorum again. And then you can reconvene the meeting. And technically, you kind of do this whenever everyone, everyone leaves the room for a five minute break.
Yeah.
Right, right. Okay, so how about this example? So we have a meeting of, let's say, there's again, three, three people and somebody has to recuse themselves because of a conflict of interest. So that immediately that means we no longer have a quorum or.
That is correct, and I have had to actually deal with that when I've had two of five commissioners, this was not here, but this is two of five commissioners who were, had to recuse themselves due to distance. And it was like summer vacation time and it was like, it took like, and usually what I do in those instances when I know there's, and this is why I want to be alerted prior to if you have a recusal. I usually kind of know where y'all live and just for the references of that, but I don't have the maps memorized. If you, and I'll take that as a remind, this as a reminder, if you need your recusal map, let me know. We do have a buy, them in here in the meeting binder now that we're in person again. But I will, we usually as staff take care of not scheduling items when we know there's going to be recusals and not a quorum. So we try to, that's like one of those agenda management things. But it does happen where you have that or someone needs to leave because they're feeling ill. And that certainly could happen and you don't have a quorum at that point and you cannot take up that matter. Or you would not want to if it's a decision.
Yeah.
Right, because it could be like this person has business dealings with, you know, the presenter. So that person has to recuse themselves. And then so that that information, I think, is important is what you're saying, Terry, is that that we always try to know that ahead of time if someone knows there's an agenda item coming up and knows that, hey, you know, this can be a conflict that obviously you need to know instead of waiting until the last minute to say, by the way, I can't.
Yes, yeah, as soon as you receive your packet, even if you don't read the items, at least look at what they are to make sure that you don't have a a non-geographic but a still a conflict of interest in it. That way we can make sure that we, yeah, do the quorum check and then if we need to, at least let the applicant know that we don't have a quorum given those things.
And does that need to be somewhere in here to to say for commissioners should be contacted or is that just somewhere else or is that, would that be helpful? I don't know.
It might actually be helpful just as a I'll look through and see if there's a place that makes sense to do that as we go through the document.
Yeah, and it's also because so it's so complicated and more complicated now, right? If someone's going to be gone, so all of that should be spelled out that to confer with the planning director to make sure it's going to work out, you know, because it has gotten a little more complicated with video and in person.
Yeah, there is a disqual, rule seventeen is a conflict of interest, so let's do that when we get there. All right, and then just for the record, the other change was obviously to change the number of people needed for a quorum now that our size has changed.
Yeah. All right, anything else on rule two?
You don't want to know about extra spaces. I think there might be one. Never mind. Okay.
Rule three, so we took three A and removing that. Does anyone have any comments on any of the rule three changes?
Yeah, and I'm going to restrict that whole A, that whole three A thing because to not be, to be more than one sentence.
Okay.
And in in B, you don't really want to keep the word chair, do you?
Uh, no, we don't. Sorry, thank you.
That was the only thing from B.
Yeah.
Just chair.
Just checking.
Everett, did you have anything on, anything else on rule three?
On E, is that part of three?
Yes.
Okay, so dates for public hearings should be set by the planning director. Does that kind of go with the same scheduling or that was already spelled up above?
It kind of is, but I think it's the, it's specific to public hearings and that's because we need to make sure that we have all of the appropriate legal notices done for that.
Got it.
So it's a little different than the, it's more than seventy-two hours. It's a lot more than seventy-two hours.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't have anything other than that.
Okay, now then rule four. Any comments on rule four? I actually had one on three, um, four A. Um, this is about the the voting for a chair and vice chair. I thought the way we did it was we usually, you know, once a chair is voted, they sort of, they take over at that meeting. This says that they will take over the following meeting. How do we want to do that?
I put that in there because whoever the new chair is, and I don't know who that's going to be, is usually not prepared to run that that meeting.
Okay. It's always happened before, but I, you know.
I know, it's a little bit odd compared to how everyone else does it. But it's more of an accommodation of how like the new chair probably doesn't, I mean, I haven't had the chance to have a meeting with them because I don't know who it's going to be.
Right.
Yeah, it makes sense.
Okay.
And what it also allows is like, for instance, like, a lot of times that meeting is like for city council is mostly ceremonial, the first meeting in December. And the chair, you know, the mayor, new mayor comes in and they do the election of officers. But it's the past mayor who knows and has met with anything, all of the background or facilitation coordination that's needed on the agenda. So this just allows for that. And of course, you could do it at the end of the meeting and then it wouldn't be a big deal either.
True, yeah, that's a good point.
I have an issue with number five, the new number five at the top of page, of the next page. I think we need a verb in here. The cons- consent calendar is to be of a non-controversial na- nature. It's as if after consent calendar, the rest is sort of a definition.
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm on rule five and it's about appeals.
Oh, wait a minute. Not the rule five. It's item five under.
Oh, I think that's under rule three, the consent calendar.
Still rule three, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, going back to rule three.
Consent calendar. It's just not a complete sentence. It's as if after consent calendar, it's a definition.
Oh, yeah, I did notice that too.
How about changing that for consent calendar? Items generally consist of those items determined advanced by the planning director to be of con- non-controversial nature.
Yeah.
Consent I, calendar items generally, okay, I'm just making sure that I get that right. I said it right. I want to make sure I do, edit it right.
You could also say the consent calendar generally consists of those items determined in advance by the planning director. I don't know if that's any better, but.
Yeah, I think it reads better. Otherwise, it seems like right now it seems like it's a definition and when you read it with the, then it's a sentence.
So like the consent calendar is generally consists, or the consent calendar generally consists of.
Yep, I like that. That's perfect.
Yeah, although she doesn't use that form in the other items below. But I think it makes more sense when you're reading that sentence.
Yeah.
And item seven, thereat is that my doesn't, not considered there. Is that correct?
I think so.
Yeah, I think that's probably, that with the thereat is a little unusual, but it is like agenda items for previous meetings that you never got to.
Got it, got it. Yeah, I just want to make sure that was like just two words put together and, okay.
Set items.
Okay.
Kind of Shakespearean English or something.
It's, it's legal. Robert's rule of order not my favorite. Plain English is much better for this kind of stuff than it's just clear to the public too.
So ten is a parentheses, needs an end parentheses.
Yes, thank you. Informational items. IE. I won't do IE though. We'll just do planning reports, announcements, et cetera. And I don't normally have, for the one under ten, I don't normally have future commission agenda items on your agenda. Some people do always put that on. Do you all want that on or not?
I would say if you put them on, they should be I, an A and a B under that, I, under item ten. But I don't know that we need to put them on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean.
It usually ends up being part of your report. I mean, you always, in your planning director's report, you say this is coming up. I think that's fine. So we could strike it from here and, or or maybe put as part of the parentheses, you know, planning director report, future agenda, you know, could be out as part of that informational items.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, so I was going to say you're really good about that, but that in the future, that might get lost and it's always good to kind of know what's coming up down the pipe, but it should be part of it.
So it's part of ten. And I'm sorry, I'm reading the markup incorrectly. Yes, you're right, it's part of ten.
I think, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's.
Yeah, and communications is part of ten.
And there's the end.
And there's your end of parentheses and that's why, that's why I was confused. We will have a clean copy for you at your next. Okay, anything else on item three? Okay, and I think we already covered four. Is that correct?
Except for C became copyright.
Yes, I saw that.
Yeah, that was really cute. And what is the?
Not the E for the Euro. I hate those.
Oh, I hate that too. I want to write, yeah, parentheses E and it's always Euro. I'm like.
And the, what's the U? Is that a the last item under I during any regular meeting? We go, it goes fourteen adjournment, I special meetings, and then there's a U during any regular meeting.
I don't think that should be a U. It should be in there because there is a, the chair has the discretion to allow members of the public reopen public comment, all that kind of stuff. So that should be in there, but I think it should be a J. Thank you. I don't think I had a Word document of this, so I saved a PDF to the Word and sometimes they translate that stuff wrong, so thank you. Okay.
We on rule four.
So rule four.
I would recommend striking of each year under A at its first regular meeting, comma, after the city council appoints.
Yeah. Which does happen each year. So it's redundant.
Well, sometimes it doesn't happen because nobody, nobody volunteers and there's nobody, I mean, you know, it's kind of weird. So this just makes it easier to.
Well, so the new year, should I say, at its first regular meeting of the new year?
Yeah, but we changed all that.
But sometimes.
They're moving it in April.
But sometimes they don't get around to appointing until like, you know, it's later in January or February sometimes even.
Right, and that's why we changed this.
Yeah, they changed that too. Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And actually, or at the next regular, on that line, I think we should delete where members are present. We're sufficient, we deleted sufficient, but I think it's like sufficient members are present. Well, that's obvious. You need a quorum to have that vote. So I think that's redundant and I like, delete those.
Yeah.
Or the next regular meeting period.
Yes, the next meeting, or at the, at the next meeting period and then capital T, the commission shall elect by firm and a vote chair and vice chair.
Wait a minute, fifth line of paragraph.
Okay, anything else on rule four? That's just about the flexibility of, you know, electing the chair and vice chair.
I've got a note here. I'm trying to figure out what it means. Chair should be all caps. No, it shouldn't be. Rule seven's chair should be, okay, sorry. Okay, we're done with, with, um, rule four?
Yeah, I think so.
And then rule five.
Five just seems kind of like, it's like you accuse yourself if there's any conflict. Is that kind of part of that?
It's not, you don't necessarily have a conflict. I, I agree, but I think this clarifies that. I, I would like to keep this because it's just, it could get really messy if someone says, but I don't have a conflict of interest. I just am appealing the action or something like that.
Got it, got it. Okay. Yeah, I wasn't sure what that meant, but that makes sense.
Yeah, and actually, the one thing that it's not really an appeal, but if there's an appeal, I guess here's, here's the question. So we, um, this is not in the rules right now, but we do have the planning commission liaison set up that we, that I introduced. It's not, so it's not in these rules and it's not required. But one of the things that has come up from time to time is if someone was a dissenting vote from the planning commission. I mean, as it stands right now, if they were and it gets appealed to council or goes to council as a recommendation from the rest of the planning commission, the majority, they can be the planning commission representative. And what I've found is that you guys are all responsible enough. But I don't know if that's always going to be the case. Just like you don't always know I'm going to be responsible.
That's the point.
And that, yeah, which is, which is Chair Fernandez's point. Do you want to set up a regulation that, or add to this rule that says, you know, additionally, if a, when an item goes to council, if the planning commission liaison voted against, in the minority, then they shouldn't be the planning commission liaison at council. To speak for the majority of the planning commission.
I think it's not a bad idea, but I don't think it should go here. Like, I think if we're going to talk about that, there should be a section here about the planet, the planning commission liaison to the council.
Yeah.
That's not a bad idea. Okay, so we should add that.
I think we should add a new item and explain that to part of that item rather than.
Yep, I had that as one of my notes.
It's not really related to appeals necessarily.
Good, I was thinking about it as, if something was appealed, but you're right.
It could just be, yeah, we could just be presenting something that we discussed.
Yeah, that's a, I don't agree with this policy, your policy you're forwarding.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to vote for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a note of that and we'll figure out where to put that.
Yeah.
All right. Minutes. I don't think that's controversial.
Rule seven just needs all caps on the chair.
Oh, on the, yeah, on the actual title.
Okay, and I didn't know if there's no chair or vice chair, then the planning director calls the meeting to order.
I didn't know that either.
Which.
I think I've actually asked another member of the commission to act as the chair, but I guess that's my right to do that. So to ask for that instead.
And that second sentence needs a capital I.
Yes, after the R at the end of order.
So where's that?
Oh, see, I'm, I'm saying it's just showing it here is the fifth line of the paragraph, but one, two, three, four, five.
You're talking.
I'm on chair, we're on rule seven.
You're talking about this one, right, Paul? On the screen? Sorry.
Let me look at my.
In the absence of both the chair and the vice chair?
That just needs a capital.
And Kathy, it sounds like you had something too then.
Yeah, it's under B. Oh, under B, sorry.
Okay, we're not on that. Yeah, so okay, cool.
I think that makes sense. Rule seven. So rule eight.
Now we're on rule eight.
Oh, did, okay. So under B on the fifth line, question of order, oh, should have a period.
Yeah, I see it.
And. Be not more than two?
Yeah.
What does it say? Okay.
Because this is not more than three commissioners.
Thank you. Yes, that should be not more than two. And actually, this is, I know this question actually has come up in terms of the subcommittees and appointment to subcommittees. This is actually a really nice way to do it. It doesn't require you have a quorum. It doesn't require you have, it, it just allows the chair to do those appointments. And, I mean, we've always had very collegial planning commissions, so that has not been an issue. I don't actually foresee that changing because if people don't like the chair, there probably wouldn't be the chair because as we just read, three, three members can vote to remove the chair if they don't like them.
Anything else on rule eight?
Does C, does the planning, does the chair ever have to sign anything? Is it always planning director?
Uh, it's just the planning director. And I'm fine doing that. Frankly, it, it would be a lot of coordination to have you sign stuff.
No, no, no. I'm fine with that. I just. Yeah.
Okay, rule nine.
Well, under item B, that's the first his or her that I ran into. So I circled that here.
Thank you.
And under C, end of line three, a period goes.
His or her at the end of the B also, paragraph.
Himself or herself.
Oh, I'm just going to do a search and replace on that one.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's good. Thank you for bringing that up the first time because that's, uh, so, but Kathy, you were saying.
Yeah, you need a period on the C at the end of the third line.
Okay, one, two, three lines.
Between commissioner and.
And if, yes.
Oh, got it. Okay, I see. Yep. All right, we're halfway done, guys. Page six.
And under D, I think there's no paragraph, a period at the end of question of order. Yep.
And same with E at the end.
Yeah. And under H, ten minutes per item to state, I think it should be opinions plural and views.
Okay, that seems.
They might just have one opinion.
Do you remember when? I was going to say, and do you remember when Jerry was on the commission?
Every time you mention Sunnyvale?
I haven't done that yet.
Okay, anything else on rule nine? We good?
Good.
Rule ten. So rule ten, we, okay, on rule ten?
Yeah.
Rule eleven.
There's obviously the dot, dot, dot at the end should be, not a comma.
Yeah.
Uh, rule twelve. Rule thirteen, anything?
Nigger.
Uh-oh.
Our Zoom people are working on this. I saw the name and it was clear, pretty clear that they were going to be, so I'm actually just locking down the stuff so that people can't unmute themselves. I am then going to make, uh, and this is for our tech people as well. I am actually going to make our, um, chair a co-host so that he can unmute himself. And since we have a small meeting, that should be just fine for tonight.
Thank you.
All right. So removing down the A, B, C, D.
On rule fourteen.
And E and F.
I do have a question.
F.
Go ahead, Everett.
Uh, yeah, on B. So my understanding was with, with the council, the way the rules are set, that each person addressing the planning committee like they ask that you state your name, but it's not required? Or is it required? I'm not sure. I mean, I liked, I personally like to know who they are and so forth, but is it something that, uh, is required or is optional? I'm not sure.
What? I think they should state their names. But which item is that?
That's fourteen B.
Yeah, fourteen B.
Okay, fourteen B.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah, I think they should as well, but it just was my understanding, something, I think I read something with the council where it said.
Yeah, so we typically don't request the address. I mean, someone may have stalkers or security issues or not, you know, so. I'm, I'm actually, I mean, I, I know it's night, most people do that. But to require that is generally not something the city council does. The name, sure, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Whether or not they live within the city or not is, I think, also valid to ask without asking. They don't have to do that. You can request that. You can't require that as part of the Brown Act public.
Yeah, that was my point on that, so.
That's fine, so we can strike the address.
All right, I don't think we have the, sorry, Paul did make you a co-host.
That's okay.
Just so everyone can do what they need to do within the appropriate meeting rules.
I'm noticing that C should be E and D should be F.
Yeah, down at the bottom there.
At the bottom.
Oh, thank you. E and F, thank you. I, I will have our planning tech who's very good at editing go through this before it comes back to you as well.
Maybe use some actual indents.
This is why I don't do that part of the job.
Actual outline form. Okay.
Anything else on fourteen? Moving on to rule fifteen. I had under, uh, uh, D one.
Yes.
There's excessive hand clapping, stamping of feet, comma, not one. You see that, Carrie?
Oh, yeah.
The stamping of feet, one, yeah.
That's the PDF, the word thing.
Yeah.
Bit me again.
And again, I think there's a, there's a parentheses added, but there's no closing of that parentheses. I wasn't quite sure.
Yeah, it should be or at the planning commission table parentheses.
Okay.
So just in case there's a planning commissioner who's being completely disruptive.
That would be interesting.
Yeah, wouldn't it? No, the thing that is a little odd in this is this whole surgeon of arms thing. We don't have a surgeon of arms. What I typically would do for that and is just call the police department.
Yeah.
Frankly, and get a real surgeon in here.
Yeah.
Or, or an officer in here. So I don't know if we want to change that just to be the realities of this. You know, I, there have been times that I, I think something might be disruptive. And I ask an officer to swing by.
Yeah, I mean, and that happened, that sort of is referenced in F. I mean, that is referenced in F. The planning director may contact the chief of police.
Yeah.
So I don't know, like, do we consider those to be combined or something? That D one and F, the enforcement of decorum is kind of what D one is talking about.
Yeah, it could be. Yeah.
I mean, it seems like they're kind of talking about the same thing. So you want to kind of mush those together somehow?
I think that's, makes sense. Everett?
Yep, um, under the members of the audience, did, did we prefer audience no longer, if more public in attendance, or for some reason, I remember audience not being the proper word, or maybe it was another word and then audience was the proper, but.
How about, yeah, I like members of the public better.
Yeah.
Audience, audience sounds like it's a show and not a, a public meeting.
Yeah.
I like that.
And I do think this is one where, you know, the, any member of the public can also be the online public as well.
Yeah.
Which is obviously what we do.
Yeah. Any member of the public in attendance is really in that, either in person or they're, for sure, but yeah, that makes sense.
And then, um, this E two, two, no, I'm sorry, just E, I guess it is. Persons authorized with it to be within the seating area. I guess this is the seating area. No person except commissioners and city staff.
Yeah, it's the, the dais and the staff seating area.
But it says, um, representatives of the news media. We don't usually allow news media to be sitting up here that I've.
I find striking that. I see members of the media in the audience all the time and that's how, or in the.
Yeah, in the public.
In the public seating area. And that's just how they do it.
Yeah, so I think we can strike the news media.
I agree. That's excellent catch.
And these days, they're more likely to be on Zoom, I would think. Than having to show up in person. Anything else on rule fifteen? Rule sixteen, voting procedure. Anything, Everett, on sixteen?
Nope.
Uh, rule seventeen, disqualification for conflict of interest. So this is where we thought we should. There's something that you said at the beginning.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not sure, but it's like, if you have a conflict, being the planning commission liaison, that felt like it was a conflict of interest. But I, I actually, now that I think about it, I'm not sure this make, that makes sense either.
Yeah.
Because it's not necessarily a conflict of interest to be in the minority. It's just not necessarily appropriate for you to be.
Presenting to city council.
Presenting to city council, the majority of opinion of the planning commission.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and it shouldn't say, uh, maybe something on there to, you know, advise, you know, ahead of time, you know, so that, you know.
Yes, that, that we did want to, yeah.
Yeah, because otherwise it's just like you show up, it's like, oh, by the way, I can't.
Yeah, especially with the whole remote in-person quorum rules. It's a lot more complicated and I need to know now.
Exactly.
And so I'll just write something like a commissioner who, um, upon receiving the pack, the agenda packet, recognizes they will have a conflict of interest, shall immediately, you know, contact the planning director to notify them.
Yeah.
And you could just say not remain seated during the debate. And you could just say not remain seated during the debate. Sort of remain in his or her seat, seems weird.
Sorry, I missed that. What, where are you?
Well, a commissioner who is disqualified by reason of a conflict, um, the next line says not remain in his or her seat during the debate.
Right.
You said not remain seated.
Yeah, you're supposed to leave.
They can actually, they should actually, and it does say, yeah, because it says later that shall request and be given permission for the chair to step down from the dais and leave the meeting room, which is the appropriate thing. Or, or be muted and video off is what I'd like to add there.
Yeah, me too. That's what I was gonna say is that if you're on video, you have to be, yeah, your video has to be off and you have to be muted.
Right.
And all you're doing is you're listening in, so.
Yes, but shall not remain seated is a far more efficient way of saying that, thank you.
But I think, I think you could actually strike that whole thing and just say, a commissioner who is disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest in any matter shall request and be given the permission of the chair to step down. You can strike that whole not remain in his or her seat during the debate and vote on such matter.
I agree.
You could just take that whole line, the whole phrase out and just go from shall to shall.
Okay. So I'm gonna read that because that's one that, um, a commissioner who is disqualified by reason of a conflict of interest in any matter shall request. Shall request and be given, because I like the shall because it says you have to.
Yeah.
Do that and do that. Um, shall request and be given the permission of the chair to step down from the dais and leave the meeting room or be muted and video silenced during the debate and vote on such matter.
And where do you, where, where do you have, like, that's something like, uh, once they, they know it's conflict of interest. I mean, they may know three months ahead of time, you know, like, we know that's coming up. So as soon as they know, I think it should, they should advise.
I think we should put that at the beginning because that's kind of the, the first step when you get the packet. And the second is starts off like any commissioner who is disqualified shall publicly state and have the chair state the nature of the disqualification in an open meeting. That usually happens, agenda item number four is statements of conflict of interest.
Yeah.
So.
But it should, it shouldn't be when they get the packet, it should be once they are aware of it. So it could be, you know, you're doing your report and you're saying, hey, this is coming up. And then I know, hey, you know, by the way, that's going to be a conflict for me. You know, I don't need to wait for the packet just as soon as I'm aware.
Right, if, yeah, if I know, if I know you can't, you're not going to be voting on such a matter like the vacation rental stuff ever.
We knew that ahead of time.
You know, you know that ahead of time, let me know.
Mm-hmm, yep, yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, we go with 17 then?
Yes.
Uh, 18. That makes sense. 19. That's make sense. Uh, 20, changing the vote, changing your vote.
So that's not, so is that saying you vote and, and then you immediately say, wait, I changed my mind? Or when, I'm not reading that correctly.
That's what that's saying.
Yes, that is what that is saying. And it's kind of awkward. It is kind of awkward, but it is allowed. And if you saw the election of the mayor a year ago or two years ago, you saw it in action.
Okay, okay.
And actually Debbie has done that before. I can't remember what item it was.
I think, I think Commissioner Burns did us to do that on a matter. And yes, we, we, this provides for that.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay.
And same with the reconsideration. I mean, the reconsideration actually is helpful when like, and I know this has happened a couple of times where we've approved something, but then forgotten about one of the conditions that was discussed and forgot to add that to the project and the record. So therefore this allows for you to be able to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And so, yes, it does mean that, you know, someone might leave and you might realize, oops, but it does allow you to do those corrections.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And then rule 22, I just wanted to make sure, I know that this is usually printed on the back of the agenda, which is great, great help. I just want to make sure it matches any, any changes here on the back of the agenda. When they explain how the meetings are run, that also kind of matches up.
I think it goes into a little bit more detail, um, because it doesn't go over the, it starts at public hearing. The chairperson shall open the public hearing, which is.
Okay.
Which is actually, yeah, so it's, it's stated a little differently. And it doesn't say you're reading the title, conflict of interest. Those aren't in there because those are just part of the.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, yeah, the staff.
Under K, the maker of the motion to have a chance for further discussion. It seems like everyone has a chance for further discussion after a motion, don't they?
Is it complete?
Yeah, I'm not sure why that says that. I mean, everyone has.
And that's what Jay says, a motion and discussion by the planning commission.
Yeah.
I mean, we're discussing at that point, so I'm not sure what K is, it seems kind of unnecessary.
I think we strike that.
Yeah.
Um, for H, I'm actually thinking, because this is, actually applies to agenda items as well as public hearings. The. Um, for H, can we change that instead of discussion? Because that makes it sound like the public gets to discuss, um, to public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's much better.
Thank you.
And, and should G, I mean, G says public to be heard, subject to limitations, so forth. And should we say something about public comment should be open on G? Just to kind of keep the language similar for, gonna close it, it should have been opened at some point?
Yes, I do want to keep subject to limitations. That means they can't talk about their aunt Nancy in the middle of a public hearing.
I agree, that's good, but I think there should be something on opening a public discussion.
Yeah.
Item G.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can say public comment or hearing.
Yeah. Public comment is good, I think.
Public comment, okay.
I like that.
Yeah, because technically you open the public hearing and close it if it's a public hearing, but otherwise it's a, and it doesn't. And do you want the chair to restate the motion or do you want it to be chair or at the chairs request the planning director? Which is often what ends up being.
I think that's, yeah.
Because usually by that time I have no idea. Yeah, no, that's good.
Yeah, chair or planning director.
And we'll just say chair or at the chairs request planning director.
Yeah.
Yes, there you go.
I usually try to ask, you want me to, you want me to summarize that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, 23, study sessions.
Yeah, so this just basically was, is being modified to say it can be either a regular meeting or a special meeting. It didn't seem like it, all of that other stuff needed to be in there. And you always have the ability to have a special meeting or have your meeting at a specific location, like the Libby Park thing.
Mm-hmm. Okay, uh, rule 24. Seems straightforward.
When you say, but shall not transmit such official resolution. Okay, that's different from just accidentally or talking about it with somebody who happens to be.
Yes, yes, this is the planning commission taking a stance on something.
25 is good.
Pretty standard.
Uh, 26.
That's also standard. Um, and, you know, we can put in here if you want. The form of minutes required by state law is to record convening, adjourning, actions, members' presence and votes. We do a lot more than that, obviously.
Yeah.
But we did get away from the total verbatim thing. Uh, I, I think the person who's doing it now is doing an excellent job, but I did just want to check in on that with you all.
I see them fine, you know, they've been good, I think.
Um, some, sometimes people state, and I guess that's probably more in the minutes section that you would state that they're not, they're not verbatim minute, you know, they're like, we have the videos online, you can just go watch them.
Yeah. Uh, 27.
Right, and so this pertains to discretionary, the quasi judicial proceeding. So that's the public hearings where it's a, um, usually it's a development project or a use permit kind of a decision. And so this is kind of just a good reminder of you can do it, however, here's how.
Yeah.
You need to proceed.
I think that all seems reasonable.
And I think on D, there's an extra return there, so we'll fix that after the shall and first line. It looks like there's a paragraph there. Um, and so, yeah, so we do, just for E, just to, so you all know how we handle this. Prior to the date of the hearing, we certainly are able to forward all written communications. That we try to do that by noon of the day. We also, if we get something in the morning, we try to do it, but we really can't guarantee it. And as you probably know, our other design review board, climate action and public art committee meetings are also now on Tuesdays. And so we aren't necessarily monitoring that and able to handle that, so.
Yeah, I think the day before, that's fine.
Yeah, it just seems to me kind of, you know, if oftentimes we have a meeting and the first time that you see a comment or, you know, a letter that somebody wrote, it's kind of hard that, you know, you're, you're just getting there to read that and to give it, you know, proper review. That's happened quite, I mean, not, not recently, but it used to happen a lot more that you'd, you know, come in with your packet and there'd be a letter sitting there from some citizen or something, you know, three page letter. And you just got there, so I don't know. I mean, it's, but you have on there, may not be reviewed by the commission, but it just seems like, um, they may, they may expect that they write a letter and we get it sitting on our desk and we're gonna look it over and, you know, but it's hard, can't do it at the same, you know, that same day.
Right, right. And, and, you know, as staff, we try to let people know who we, who have called and let it, you know, we let them know, hey, if you get it to us before, you know, Wednesday noon or end of day, just depending on when we're publishing the packet. I mean, obviously if we're getting the packet too early because it's a big item, then that changes. But we do let them know, hey, if you want it included in that packet, we need it by this day. Otherwise try to get it to us by the Monday before the meeting so we can get it to the commissioners in time for them to review it. And we forward those separately. So we, we do let people know that, you know, some people don't get it to us till late and there's not a lot we can do about that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, all right, anything else? More about.
Anything else on here?
Right.
Um, and so the last thing is just like in assistance, that planning commission liaison thing. Um, I can certainly write that up. Is there a, did anyone see a good place to put that? A place that they felt it would kind of fit?
How about, um.
I mean.
Under rule 24, the communication by boards.
How about we add a section 25 there that's about the planning commission liaison?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, yeah, the communication by boards and sort of like our communication.
Yeah, because that is your communication of the council potentially in 24 and then.
Yeah.
Okay. And I will try to write that flexibly so that if there, if that's not possible, you know, if the, if the, if there is no one available, which has happened, um, the planning director shall represent the planning commission. Because that's what it used to always be before we had the liaison and I certainly have done that. Or when it's just, it's a cut and dry kind of a thing and it's like the gas station ban. I did not need someone from the planning commission. I had four people from the climate action committee.
And I would, you know, I would, Carrie, just also say, there's probably things that you do that are efficient or that work, right? That you just like, you have set policies and you say, okay, this is working really well. It'd be good to kind of know some of that. For example, uh, if you don't get something to me by noon or, I'm just saying, if you, if you find something or you come up with something that's working for you that you've implemented, it'd be good to add it. So it continues, you know, is a good idea because when you have a change, it just, things, you know, change. So I, I'm open to your suggestions. And I know you, you probably had that on there, but it just goes without saying, if there's anything that's working or not, or, or doesn't work, that should be on here, uh, with the idea that you may not always be there. We're not gonna always be here and, you know, be nice to continue something that's good or avoid something that's not so good down the road.
Yeah, and I think I, so there's a couple of things, thank you, Chair Fernandez. So under the rule three, the agenda order, I had added into that, um, that A, which is moving, I know, but it's that they're regarding the scheduling of items and the specific order on the, so like, there's often times where it, if you know you have a big controversial hearing, you're gonna want to shove some stuff to the end. Whereas it, and, and this is, you know, city council doesn't change their order for that stuff. And it's sometimes less accommodating to the public or the applicant. I try to just change the agenda order to make sure it makes sense for the public, who might be interested in something or that kind of stuff. Um, so I appreciate that kind of flexibility that I think I kind of wrote into it. The planning commission liaison's one. I don't know if you could have another director that would be interested in doing it differently, but I think that's, that's something that I think is really helpful for communication between the commission and the council. So I, I think that's what we're putting in.
Mm-hmm, and it's not asking a lot because you have, you know, you have liaison, you have the backup person. And especially now, I mean, it, it may just be you listening in on the meeting, you know? I mean, you don't necessarily have to go there in person, right? That's, if you're the liaison, just listening on the meeting, if something comes up or the question, particular item, you know, you're there. So, um, I think it's, it's easier than it's been in the past.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the only other thing, but I wouldn't necessarily want to put it into the rules, is the work plan. Um, it's a tool I use and I hope it's helpful to the commission, but I don't, I don't think I'd want to put that in the rules because it's, you know, unless it was something like that may from time to time, develop a work plan and have it adopted by council. And then I don't know how useful it isn't because it's not really a rule, it's just sort of a guidance thing.
Yeah, it's more, it's more, um, yeah, I don't know that that needs to be in the.
It's more just my management style.
It's more, it's more, it's more helpful for you. I mean, it's helpful for us, but it's more about how you're organizing.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
Okay, well, if there's nothing further on this, then so you're gonna bring this back at some future meeting for a vote then, right?
Correct, so we should be able to have this for you at your next meeting.
Okay.
Um, I mean, there aren't significant changes, it's just tidying it up and proofreading it. And yeah, so that should not be a problem.
I don't see any public here, but do we need to officially open it up for public comment?
Thank you, there is no public on this meeting and I have not received any comments from the public on this agenda item.
And there's nobody in the room here.
Yes, or remember the public departed.
Yes, okay.
Um, okay, so 7B, I would actually, since there's only three of us here, recommend that we not do the planning commissioner trainings. I think it's useful for all of us to be part of that. Um, so if we're not all here, I'd rather put that off, if that's okay to everybody else.
Yeah, I'm kind of reaching my limit as far as my, my, uh, my strict nurse, uh, wife slash wife is on me, so I gotta be careful.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to get through all these, but, you know, I'd, I'd rather have all of us here to participate.
Yeah, I agree.
Rush through them.
No problem, although I did get the sound working, I promise.
Well, if you want to just try it to show us. Just write and hope you wrote it down so you remember next time.
I, I have a sticky note on my Outlook notes thing. I don't have those for hardly anything other than like the Press Democrat legal notice stuff and that.
Uh, all right, so, um, uh, next item is Subcommittee Updates. Does anyone have anything to report? I'll just say that the, um, the Design Guidelines Subcommittee has been meeting and going through the Objective Design Standards. And it's actually, I'd say it's been a fun process for me, and I think they're, um, really good. And hopefully, when they come to commission, you guys will see the, the thoroughness of them, and it's really a lot of information. And a lot of clear information, I think, will be really helpful for those projects in the future.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and we did just to, um, the meeting before yours, the Design Review Board meeting, we did do an update to them. It was the trends, um, Transmission of the Existing Conditions Report, which I know you guys got a while ago, but they've had load-packed agendas, so we didn't put it on until now. I did also give probably about a half an hour presentation on the housing law that is kind of the background for that, both the Housing Accountability Act and SP thirty-five. It's basically the presentation you guys got in twenty-twenty-one when we had that joint meeting. I will say that we are, I am trying to work with Chair Fernandez as well as, um, city admin, um, and council to schedule a joint meeting. That would be an update to that, because that meeting, that presentation did not include SB nine, the Single Family Law Split, which is half of what you guys will be, are working on. But also a refresher and education for the commission on the SB thirty-five as well as the council, which is new council members that aren't familiar with that. And, and so to try to provide the context for everybody before we head into the public hearings on the Objective Design Standards and the SB nine, which will be an ordinance, uh, amendment to our subdivision ordinance. We are probably at this point, given the additional time the Subcommittee is requesting, plus juggling everyone's summer schedules with council and Planning Commission, um, we're probably looking at like having that right at the beginning of September when school gets back. And then proceeding with the hearings after that is where it's kind of looking. I'm, I've been talking with Chair Fernandez about that, too, so.
Great. Um, I see if there's no more submitted Subcommittee Updates.
Um, I do have one update, and it can either be that or the Planning Director, but it is sort of related to the Parks Subcommittee and the Libby Park fencing thing. So that is, um, from the Budget Committee, they did request that the city put that on hold. However, the Rotary is still interested in doing it as a potential fundraising project. So that is still a go, but it is, there's no longer a rush to get it done before June thirtieth. So that is, and, um, I will just coordinate that offline with the Rotary folks and, um, and the Planning Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Planning Director's Report.
Okay, so for the Planning Director's Report, I'll, um, I'll start off. Do you guys have any questions on development projects and where they're at? Because that's, I, I feel like not a lot has changed since our last meeting, but it's also been a month, so I don't know if there are questions about particular projects.
Well, everyone keeps asking about the hotels, so if there's an update on that, that would be great.
Sure, sure. Um, no, this, this mine, that was the same question for that and Woodmark were the two questions at the DRB meeting, so. So the Hotel Sebastopol, they are still waiting, I just checked with them a week or so ago, on their approval of the archaeology. However, they have submitted the Caltrans encouragement permit package. That will include a moving the crosswalk or eliminating the crosswalk where it's where Screaming Mimi's is, um, because that's a safe, known safety issue. It's Caltrans liability, but it's known, but like, we care about our community, so we don't, whose liability is, we just want to fix the problem. We don't want to take on liability for that, but we want to fix the problem. The, the hotel includes the, the crossing at Weeks Way. And so that is, uh, what we were able, they were able to submit with the Caltrans. And, and our city engineer has been working with Caltrans to make sure they will be okay approving that, and it sounds like that will go through. Caltrans is looking at doing a crosswalk improvement with, I think, the flashing pedestrian signs across Petaluma at McKinley. They originally wanted to put one of those really big ugly boxes right at that corner where it's going to enter the hotel, and Mario and I have been working with them to say, no, no, no. Don't put it right there. That's going to be a nice big pedestrian area entry into this right across from our town square. And so I think, I think we're getting them to move that. It'll be, it will, it will be on McKinley after that kind of comes, goes back down to more of a pedestrian, you know, sidewalk scale. So they, their engineers have been working hard and fast on that, as well as their PG and E application, which is a little complex because they have power crossing a public right-of-way between the solar on their parking across Brown Street from the hotel where all their electrical stuff is. We've been, and I think the city engineer just submitted some letters to PG&E to make sure that they know that we are good with that. Usually people don't like undergrounding private utilities underneath the city street, but in this case, we want that. It actually, what we'll probably be, end up doing or needing to do is just merge those two parcels into one parcel. A little unusual, but I've seen it before where public right-of-way go through a, a single parcel. It, it does happen, it's not unknown. Uh, in this case, it actually, from a planning perspective, is a little bit easier because you don't have your required parking on a separate parcel from the rest of the reviews. So I almost prefer it because I don't have to worry about that anymore. And, and that original approval did not have any sort of parking agreement, um, cross easement, so technically it's two separate parcels. You could sell it and then not be in compliance with your parking, so. So that's where the, a little bit more detail of what the hotel has been working on while they are waiting, and they're also working on their response to State Historic Preservation Office on their archaeology stuff.
I have a question on delivery or livery. I can never get it right, the right ones. Project.
Okay.
The, the, yeah, how's that coming along or?
They have their building permits. I don't know if they've had any inspections yet or what they, how much they have done. Um, I know we did have a pre-construction with, meeting with them to talk about road closures and lane closures and, and some of that kind of stuff that, for, that they're going to need when they do their, some of their utility and frontage work. They had originally requested to close that whole street, Burnett Street area. But from a fire and a, just a local access with our one-way streets, um, we did not allow that as a city. We, uh, but we would, would allow a lane closure, I think, um, for the, you know, the times when they need it, so.
Thank you.
Uh, and then the Woodmark, they do have their building permits, and they said they were going to start either later this week or next week, so. I, I know mostly they've probably just been waiting for the site to dry out because their first step is grading and with all the rains, it's, um, I know I had, I had erosion in my yard, so I can't imagine what digging a nine-foot excavation would be over there, so.
Oh, no, actually I did have one more. And the, and the Habitat for Humanity across from Safeway.
Um, I have not, um, heard from them in a little while, so I'm not quite sure whether, I mean, their approvals are all done, they have their Designer Review Approval. So they can commence whenever they want to. Um, I do have an update on the eight forty-five Gravenstein Highway, which is right now the Safe RV Parking Village. And that is Saint Vincent de Paul, who's the owner of the property, um, they're in, when they purchased it before SAVES, uh, moved there with a temporary use. Their intent was always to do long-term, permanent affordable housing, and so they, uh, did ask to meet, the, um, they've been meeting with me and they are planning on applying for Project Home Key Round Three funds for construction of that. We got approval from city council or authorization to submit a grant. They require a co-applicant as a jurisdiction you're in. So the council approved that at their last meeting. I have a meeting with them and the state HCD tomorrow about that application process, but the project, I don't think it came to the Planning Commission, but it, they're basing the site plan and sort of the building design off of a, a mixed-use project that was approved in twenty sixteen. That project had about ten thousand or so, ten, ten, eleven thousand square foot commercial on the first floor and eleven units above. With the building in front and the parking in back, so they're basically using the exact same footprint, so they hopefully will be a straightforward process for the DRB. And instead of the ground floor retail, they're changing that to be eleven units, so they'll have the eleven units first floor, eleven units in seconds. They are looking at potentially doing a stepped-back third story right in the middle of it to get some additional units on there. Their, their architect is working on that. So we had a pre-application meeting with all of the various departments, um, just so they knew what all the physical and infrastructure stuff was going to be needed for that, so.
And they're not thinking about a fourth floor?
They are not. Well, three stories is allowed permitted by right in our zoning district. So that's a, that doesn't require a density bonus or any sort of discretionary review. So they're, but, but financially, they were, you know, they don't know if they can do the third floor of units financially. So that in itself, what they, yeah, what they had originally been looking at, and when I met with them, you know, just not with the rest of the committee, well, actually, myself and the building official met with them to look over a couple of options they had. One was looking at doing a third-story addition in the future, should they get funding. And from a building perspective, that never ever happens because codes change and it's too complicated, and your structure needs to be way too expensive to begin with. So we kind of said, hey, you know, well, you could do that now. The other was to do a really long upper floor with parking below all the way to the back of the site, which just felt, did not, did, has a lot of adjacency issues to it, and the perspective that you would see from Gravenstein was not a good. I think the Designer Review Board probably had problems with it. So we kind of got to the hey, the, the hey, but, you know, a third story stepped back is, I mean, that's consistent with our design guidelines and it's consistent with our zoning code, so. But they, as part of the grant, they are required to provide supportive housing and case management for it, and so that's part of the financial stuff they need to look into as well. They, they basically have to be the social service provider after it opens. Uh, I think the state requires for a minimum of five years, but the reality is you end up doing that long term.
And just so you know, are they thinking about having efficiency unit, single occupancy, or are they looking at a variety of sizes?
They're looking at a variety of sizes. Uh, not group home, this is basically, um, similar to what Elderberry Commons is being transitioned to, where they're basically apartments, and they're just offered at a very low income. And, and with the supportive housing, so the case management.
With just one bedroom or studio or one or two bedrooms?
No, they do have, I think they even have a couple of two bedrooms and one bedrooms, so they would allow for families, yeah. So any other project updates?
How about Huntley Square? I haven't heard about that for a while.
I have not heard from them. I do know that they, um, they did, um, they may be requesting to do a rental or a rent-to-own to begin with, that is, that will require a condition of approval change, um, because of their exemption from the inclusionary housing stuff. But I did talk to them, and if they do that, they would be renting in accordance with the inclusionary housing requirements for that, that time, and so, like, they, they have to submit that still for us to be able to review it, but they are looking at that. And I did, I think they did the tree removal that's required at the frontage for the sidewalks this year, so they, because they asked to do that pre, prior to the nesting season. Because that's usually a big deal. So we, I approved that.
Okay. Any other questions?
All right, a couple, I'll just give a budget. So that's development project stuff, just budget Subcommittee. As you probably know, there've been a lot of meetings and things with that. The Budget Subcommittee did complete their rounds of discussions yesterday, so now it will be headed to the full council in June, and I would anticipate maybe also early in July, so we'll see. But, um, the capital improvement plan is also part of that package. That's the park plan. We did get the bids for the AmeriCorps project in today. Um, and they're a little over what was in this year's budget, but was sort of anticipated in next year's budget, but we do want to get that project moving, so I think that's going to the June second meeting in June to council to get authorization for that project, and we have park funds to cover that overage. We, we always kind of knew that there was no way a twenty sixteen budget proposed, project that, or twenty seventeen project that, um, was being done in twenty twenty-three that didn't include anything, project management or inspection services was going to have to be, have a budget supplement, so. But that project will be, it, you know, that's a significant milestone is to get the bids and not, and have a reasonable bid that was responsive. They did get through bids, so their little bid was, they feel is responsive on that one. Um, and then they did also get, um, the bids for the Ives Park Segment One, which is from the pool restroom to the corner, and that actually came in under, so they may end up just doing a little bit more, uh, toward the east within the funding that we have from the state. So we maximize that grant, and then I am actually applying for another grant, a recreational trails program that was identified by our grant consultant to do segment, the rest of the segment of that. And that's only a twelve percent city match, so it's a pretty good program for the city, so. So I'm bringing that to council for authorization at their next meeting. So that's kind of the parks update. Other Budget Subcommittee, um, I don't think there's a lot that impacts the Planning Commission. We did have a, um, the facade improvement grant was reduced. And some of the climate initiatives, like doing another climate fellow like Phoebe, uh, was eliminated. And, but again, this is the Budget Subcommittee's recommendation to the full council, so that, those discussions will, are still pending. I think that's it. And then I did, uh, just an update, our planning technician did accept our offer, and she's going through her various screenings right now, and so we hope to have her on board early July. If not, sorry, sooner. We'll see. But early July is her tentative start date.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right. I will now, I guess, adjourn our meeting until June thirteenth, and I'll see you all then. Thanks. Actually, I, I won't see you all then. I'm not going to be here June thirteenth.
Recording stopped.
I think I told you, and actually I.